Morning Kay.
Morning Bill.
Morning Linda.
Good morning.
Hey Linda, I'm not quite sure how long our meeting is gonna go, but I've gotta take Tina to the doctor and I'm gonna have to jump off about nine. So if it's still going, you're gonna have to pick it up.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yep, thank you. I think we should go ahead and get started Kay. Scott, you on?
I'm here Mayor. Good morning.
Alright, good morning everybody. Here we are at our council work session for Monday, January 25th. Let's go ahead, we're gonna get started. Our three items today, we're gonna work on the Residence Academy and Engage DSM, Language Access and a Rental Code Enforcement and Proposed Changes in that. Let's get started on the Residence Academy and Scott, I'll quickly turn it over to you.
Thank you Mayor, council members, good morning. Actually Assistant City Manager Malcolm Hankins has been leading the efforts on all three of these with staff. And so I'm gonna turn it over to him for some introductory talk and then some additional comments. Malcolm?
Thank you Scott. Good morning Mayor and Members of City Council, Malcolm Hankins Assistant City Manager. Today's staff presentations provide specific updates on two Bridging the Gap initiatives. Manisha Padell, the city's Equity Coordinator will provide updates on the Language Access Policy and the Residence Academy Initiative. Sue Ann Donovan's Rental Inspection Code presentation will follow. And while it's not directly a presentation regarding the Bridging the Gap, she'll touch briefly on correlation between what she's presenting and one of the Bridging the Gap initiatives which deals with the Fair Housing Training Objective. Before Manisha gets started, just like to give you a general update on the overall status of Bridging the Gap initiatives. So if the presentation is available at this point. Next slide please. So all thirteen, there are thirteen initiatives that are currently part of the Bridging the Gap effort. All thirteen initiatives are on track and in various stages of completion. I won't go through each of these in detail, you also received a correspondence from me recently that provided the same information, so I won't necessarily go through them itemized. But just as an overview, four of these initiatives, the Fair Housing Training, Restore the Youth Advisory Board and Cultural Competency Training, and then the Strengthen the Human Rights Ordinance, all of those require ordinance amendments. These proposed ordinance amendments are in draft form at this point. So the language is being worked on with legal review and so we're pleased with progress on those. Two of the initiatives are noted, as you can see, as complete and are now in what we would consider a monitoring and review stage. Other initiatives of note are listed in the update, so starting with today's update from Manisha, you'll receive updates from staff on the remaining seven initiatives, more specific updates over the next few months. So, thank you and unless you have questions about this overview, I'll turn this over to Manisha Padell for the two initial presentations. Alright, thank you.
Thank you Malcolm. Good morning Mayor, City Council Members and the Members of the public. Thank you so much for having me here this morning to share updates on the two of the items as Malcolm mentioned regarding the Bridging the Gap initiatives. As Malcolm shared the overview of it, I will share about Residence Academy, which we're proposing the name to be Engage DSM and the Language Access Policy. So as you can see on the screen here, this was the recommendation from the Des Moines Civil and Human Rights Commission during your joint meeting on June 11, 2020. This is just up here for your review. So what I'm going to go through is just the preliminary concept of what the Residence Academy or Engage DSM would look like. The program is really a form of a residence institute to learn about City of Des Moines government operations and also opportunities for meaningful public engagement. One of the reasons we wanted to do this program for residents as well as city staff and our elected officials as well as volunteer boards and commission members and committee members to be a part of is really for residents to learn about the services, programs and operations of their local government, which is the City of Des Moines, and also learn about opportunities to engage meaningfully and develop sustainable relationships. And the key word really is that sustainable, long-term relationship with staff as well as their elected and volunteer board commission committee members. In this program, they will learn about different forms of government and their roles, including state government's role, county, city, but also the form of government that we operate in, priorities and long-term plans for the city, you know, similar plans as Plan DSM, Live DSM, Move DSM and others that we have in our community. And to learn about department-specific services, each department would do a presentation about their services. This would also be an opportunity for residents to learn about engagement opportunities, whether it's boards and commissions or other opportunities where resident input is received and seek from the city's end. And then the other item is the decision-making process which includes budget council actions. So this is really about that local government 101, but with the value added about focusing on the engagement opportunities and different forms of engagement. They would also connect with fellow residents, city staff, elected officials, board commission committee members and also neighborhood leaders, whether it's in their neighborhood or other neighborhoods across our community. So this is just a preliminary program outlined based on some research that we've done and some staff have shared their personal experience and other theories that they've either worked in or interacted in. So the proposed idea is a six-week, I'm sorry, five-week program, starting with, you know, first week with that introduction assessment of more of a program assessment such as, you know, do you know how the budget amount or how it operates, how decisions are made? And they would do that and then the participants would also participate in post-assessment to really for us to recognize that the impact of the program. Week one, the first session would also include a presentation from City Clerk's Office, for example. This would be an opportunity for residents to learn about, again, forms of government limitations, how decisions are made, what roles they play as residents, and also what are opportunities at the City of Des Moines for their, for boards and commission memberships? What does the application process look like? And even navigating our city's website and other forms of messaging and services that we deliver and information shared with the residents. So this is establishing that communications channel with each department and department staff would be there either in a video form or in person, if we are able to do this in person. But when it's done virtually, they would be present to really talk about the mission values, key objectives and even performance goals of the department. So this outline does not necessarily include all departments and then, but this is really for our sort of demonstration purpose in terms of what that looks like. And ideally each week would be about one and a half hours or so for the online version. If we were to do this virtually and in person, about three hours. And we've found that that's been sort of the best practice across the board for a program like this unless it's done, unless it's a day-long eight-hour session, which we're still thinking about that, but this seems to be most favored by residents in other places. So the content of the program would really be the, you know, it would be the outlines of services and programs within the city. Some may even involve tour of facilities and assets. And this would mean if we want our residents or participants of this program to see Central Library, for example, then the session would be held at Central Library, so they're onsite as they're learning. Short videos where department would share information, engagement opportunities, decision-making scenarios. I've seen one where participants were asked to rezone at their neighborhood and two different groups made two different decisions and that really shows the amount of decision-making process that it takes in a process like decision, budget decisions or even rezoning. This would also be an opportunity for departments to seek specific program or project input from the residents or the participant program. They would learn about key performance indicators and how that's tracked and how residents can have access to that information if it is publicly available. Information about job and volunteer opportunities and volunteer opportunity is very broad here. It could be board commission, committee involvement and sometimes it may just be that one-time opportunity for engagement with a certain department or a project. And then also the interest invitation for interest-based engagement. And this is something like, you know, if it's a park planning process and if a parks department wants to invite residents to participate in something like this, this would be a place they would learn about that. Or similar to Bridging the Gap Dialogue, this would be an opportunity for the Des Moines Civil and Human Rights Department to offer the opportunity to learn about the program in the past, but then also future opportunities. And if, you know, being in person or even attending virtually is a barrier for residents, whether it's due to transportation or access to technology or even childcare, would make sure that these videos are recorded and we would do an analysis in terms of who's attending and who's not to ensure that those are put in access in utilization of a program like this. So the next steps here really is to collaborate with City of Des Moines staff for content creation and this includes staff from Neighborhood Services that are also doing research and similar effort. So we would work together with Neighborhood Services staff, communication staff, of course, and then the Equal Opportunity Advisory Committee, which is a part of our city's staff-led effort. And so there are some staff members on that committee that are interested to be a part of this effort. So would be a cross-departmental, across, or across the organization effort. We'd seek input from the Des Moines Civil and Human Rights Commission, of course. And then at some point, maybe, you know, we would want to incorporate residents' feedback, both on the program content, but also the impact of it. And one is that post, pre-post evaluation or assessment. And the other could be just a general, you know, idea of seeking opportunity for residents. And this would all include our young residents as well. And then we would finalize the program content and launch. So that's all what I have in terms of Residence Academy. If you have any question or if there's anything that I can explain a little bit further.
Linda, my sheer hand up.
I do, thank you Mayor. Manisha, I know that we've talked about this type of program for a long time. And at one point NRB was, was the, was the board and the commission that was kind of leading this. How is, how is NRB and have they been involved in this? Or how are, how are you blending them, how are you getting their input? I guess that's my question.
Yeah, absolutely. So Malcolm, I and Chris had a conversation on Friday, Chris Johansson, and we are actually going to merge the efforts of the NRB board members as well as staff from the Neighborhood Services to ensure that this is a collective effort from the, from the City of Des Moines. And if it makes sense for it to be sort of led by NRB members and we would just provide that staff support, absolutely, we would definitely want to do that. And some of the content that, you know, when they did a presentation, it's similar to what I'm sharing here and I did make sure that I was able to incorporate the ideas that were shared from the NRB as well as the staff that supported the research behind this. So yeah, absolutely.
And my next question is, is I know that a lot of us, many of us have talked about offering something to the neighborhood leaders, you know, go to the neighborhood associations and offer something to those, the board members of the neighborhood groups. I mean, it seems many of them are struggling in how to engage their neighborhoods. They're struggling with how to even lead a meeting. I mean, many of the neighborhood leaders, we still have some neighborhood association leaders that have been around for a long, long time that are experts at leading a meeting. But we also have some neighborhood leaders that are newer to this and it seems like they're kind of going sideways. Are we going to offer something to those neighborhood association leaders and others that would like to attend? But specifically talk about how to engage their neighborhood and how to run a meeting and, and then lead them down the path about boards and commissions and, you know, incorporate everything else that you're talking about.
Yes, absolutely, thank you for sharing that. I, I would think that this program would be catered to different audience, meaning if it, you know, as it's, as we take this to the neighborhoods and engage our neighborhood leaders and members in a program like this, we would, a part of that content would incorporate meetings, right? Responsibilities and what does that structure look like in different neighborhoods? And it may look different in different neighborhoods so that they are equipped with the information to run their meetings, but also services and programs that are offered as a pathway to boards and commission, but also prior to that, being effective in the work that they do because it is a lot of time commitment for neighborhood leaders and members of neighborhood associations. So I definitely see, you know, absolutely, we can cater the program content based on who we're serving. So, you know, let's say if there's a group of high school students that want to participate strictly and then we would want to make sure that we're providing content that's pertinent to that group. So there should be enough flexibility within the program itself to ensure that we're providing that, almost like a board, you know, nonprofit board coaching type, but not quite to that extent at the neighborhood level, you know, learning opportunities to that nature and then maybe even share examples from other neighborhoods and how that's from. So I do see a possibility in doing that.
I would hope that we would look to engage some of those leaders. You know, George Davis has been around for many years and he gets, you know, I'm told he gets 75, 100 people at his meetings. And then other neighborhood leaders are struggling to get, you know, they have the same nine people show up every month. So I would hope that we would use the expertise of, of folks like George that have been doing this for a long time and know how it's done.
For sure, thank you for sharing George's name. And yeah, well, as we work with Neighborhood Services team, we'll make sure to engage residents even in leading and facilitating some of these efforts too.
Great.
At least at the beginning of it, for sure. Thank you.
Anybody else? Manisha, thanks for kicking it off.
Thank you. Okay, so the next item is the Language Access Policy. And again, sharing this screen from the joint meeting from June 11, 2020. And so this, the City of Des Moines Language Access Policy is really, it's a policy to create and ensure language access to pertinent documents and information for our residents. And the key word here again is that pertinent documents. We want to make sure that these are important documents that departments would ensure that they're able to identify what those are and what that information is. So language is not a barrier for residents to access that information. The purpose of this policy is that we're, you know, we're a very diverse community in Des Moines and it's increasing daily. And we want to ensure that we're intending to reduce language barriers in public engagement. We have been contracting with Language Line Solutions since 2004 and that really means that when residents, you know, call us or walk through our doors and if they speak a language other than English, they could ask for that language support. And so that is, although it's offered, not all residents are aware of it and if they are, sometimes there is that hesitation. So we want to ensure that this policy proactively creates that opportunity so the barrier does not even exist at the beginning. So doing a quick search on that, on the census data, nearly 14% of our residents are born outside of the United States, which is not to assume that none of them speak English as their primary language, but that does give us an idea in terms of the number of residents that we have who may not speak English as their primary language at home. And myself, you know, I was born outside of the US. I speak English fluently, but it's still not my primary language compared to someone else who may be new to the community and are probably still learning the language. So there is that difference in terms of who was born outside the US and their fluency in, in the language. And so the language, although it says Language Access Plan, it really is a policy that would be proactive effort beyond non-discrimination compliance measures, where we are sharing information that every department finds important and necessary for residents to learn or to have access to. And once the policy is drafted, we would just have a very short plan in terms of the implementation of it. So very quick data on the languages spoken. It's, it's been a challenge to collect specific data on individuals, our residents that speak languages other than English. So the two areas where we were able to rely on were the Des Moines Public School data as well as the CDBG jurisdiction information from American Community Survey that Lisa Krabs was able to provide to me, so that was very helpful. And as you can see, the first column, which is for the Des Moines CDBG jurisdiction, Spanish and Vietnamese are the two languages that are sort of identified that are over 1%. And then number two and number three just says other Asian specific languages, language or other and unspecified language. So that makes it difficult to identify what specific language that is. I missed to mention that the Bridging the Gap recommendation was to proactively provide language translation and interpretation in languages that are spoken by over 1% of the population. So in this case, it would be Vietnamese and Spanish. And we would need to identify what those two other languages are that are not specified or listed. And then going down the list, so these are the top 10. And on the right column, these are from, the list is from Des Moines Public Schools, Spanish, Karen, Swahili, and it just goes down the list. And then number 11 has 877 students speak languages other than the top 10 that are listed here, which means that there is that language diversity and offering our, and these are students, right? So if their families are likely speaking that language as well, which means that there is that need for interpretation and translation services. And sometimes students that may be enrolled in, not enrolled in the LEP program, which is the Limited English Proficiency, may be fluent in English, but their parents or their grandparents or their other family members may not be. So it's also to be mindful of that data that we may not even have because there are families with, without any children enrolled in the school system. And then there's also information about the disability type based on the CDBG jurisdiction. You know, when we talk about language, we don't just mean non-English language. There is need for accessibility in terms of language for our hard of hearing and for individuals with visual disabilities as well. So and that is, you know, over 1% for sure, but the hearing difficulty being 3.6%, 61% and vision is 2.26%. Councilmember Westergaard, did you have a question?
I do have a question. I know that on our city website, you can pick what language you want to see things in. I'm looking at this presentation right now and at the bottom of my screen, everything is coming in in English. If somebody wanted to, was watching this presentation right now, would they be able to have it converted over to their language?
No, no.
No, okay. Okay. That was my question, thank you.
Yeah, no problem. So the best practice research in terms of what other communities are doing, there are some that are, you know, bigger cities, but their programs seem to be very effective. So, you know, at the state level, State of New York has translation or interpretation services between people in their primary language. And then they do translate vital documents and they have different state agencies identify what those vital documents are. Long Beach, California also has identified three languages to be, to be that primary proactive translation interpretation offered because that's spoken by majority of their, their non-English speaking communities. Chicago has identified six languages. And they do have an Office of New Americans and have a Language Access Advisory Committee. And it was based on their recommendations that those six languages were identified. And they do do a regular review to ensure that when newer residents arrive, their languages are also considered. Three others are from Philadelphia, Cleveland, Aurora. Iowa Department of Transportation also has a Language Access Plan to ensure that the community is able to not only learn about their policies and practices, but also communicate with the staff. There, Philadelphia has a plan that includes translation, interpretation and also training and hiring multilingual staff. And that training is for staff and there's a significant amount of effort put into ensuring that they're considering staff members or applicants for jobs that speak multiple languages. So the next steps for this is really to utilize the expertise of the newly formed, which will soon be formed Refugee and Immigrant Advisory Subcommittee. I should say reformed, it existed in the past and it will have new members in the next couple of months through the Des Moines Civil and Human Rights Commission. And there are commissioners that are very interested in this effort and would want to take leader, leadership as well. The City of Des Moines Equal Opportunity Advisory Committee, again, there are members that want to be a part of this effort. I'm just seeing that there will be, again, yet another organization-wide effort. I'm just seeing that there will be, again, yet another organization-wide effort in getting this policy drafted and also implemented and, and look at what that looks like timeline-wise, long-term. Because we do want to make sure we're identifying languages spoken by that one percent plus population. And we want to work with our community partners as well, especially to identify residents who don't speak languages other than English or who are, who have speech and visual barriers, to truly make sure that we are informed of, of what the needs are out there. And also, you know, utilize these partnerships to share information further out to the communities that we may already not be connected with. And, you know, this, this would mean that we, we would want to partner with Pope Company as well, Invest DSM, and update the documents as the language needs change throughout the coming years. As we know that with new arrivals of our immigrant and refugee community members, language needs also shift and change. So that's all I have for the Language Access Policy portion of the slide. Any questions?
Anybody have anything? I don't see any hands up. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Scott, back to you.
Yep, actually, I'll leave it in Malcolm's hands. I know we've got Sue Ann on board.
Thank you, Mayor and Scott. Sue Ann Donovan is, is going to present her update on the rental code changes that she's proposing. And so I'll just turn it over to Sue Ann. I think you're muted, Sue Ann.
I am. So I'm going to try and share my screen.
It's there, Sue Ann.
Is it? Okay, thank you. So today, we're going to talk about the rental code and some updates that we are anticipating putting into the code. First, I want to kind of talk a little bit about the COVID impact. We did code changes that we hoped would incentivize good management. We changed the length of certificate based on the condition of the property upon inspection. And we're holding owners to a workman-like standard to get better repairs for our neighborhood. We were making progress and then COVID-19 hit and it sort of stalled the momentum. We are continuing to conduct inspections using virtual methods and are preparing to go back into in-person inspections. But we feel like it's going to take us a couple of years to get caught back up again because there was some delay in some of those inspections. Housing Appeals Board members. Are you seeing this, the slide that says Housing Appeals Board members?
No, I'm not.
We're just seeing the COVID impact.
Okay. Okay. Housing Appeals Board members, they are council appointments. We provide training for them. We present cases to them with our recommendations. We feel like the process depends on the code being followed. So we hope the board will follow the code and our request for enforcement. Recently, there have been a number of cases where extensions of time were granted. One was for an owner to allow him time to sell the property, which didn't get the repairs done. And one was for an owner with a lot of rental properties in the City of Des Moines so that he could finally get a contractor to complete the work, even though he'd had up to sixty, ninety days to do that. Some of the historic things that have been in the code that we believe need to be changed for safety purposes for our residents. Historically, we allowed residents to exit a building from one unit through another. As you can imagine, these were in larger homes that were divided up into number of units. That doesn't provide a safe exit system. In some cases, we've found that the resident in the unit that was being entered through would put wooden panels over the knockout panels or put heavy pieces of furniture in front of the door for their own feeling of safety. So the, the knockout panel couldn't be used just to some, for somebody to enter their apartment. The knockout panels are not supported by building or fire code, and we feel like they need to be eliminated. So the owners would need to bring in a floor plan to show how exiting will be code compliant. There will be probably some permits that will be needed for structural changes. The change could result in a reduction in the number of units in the house in order to combine units for safe exiting. We feel like the upgraded grades should be phased in over time as certificates expire to give them two or three years to get ready for the change. Another source of problems is heating sources. It's not legal under the mechanical code to have one heat source for more than one occupied unit. So again, you find older homes that have been parceled off into different units having a single source of heat, which creates shared air and is a health issue. So all structures with a single heat source will need to be upgraded so that each individual unit has its own heat source. Again, we feel like the upgrades can be phased in over time as certificates expire. Familial status. Historically, we have excluded properties from our inspection program that are occupied by a mother, father, son, or daughter of the owner of the rental. We kind of fear this loophole is not preserving the exterior of our housing stock. And it's in, it's sort of in line with our property improvement efforts. This amendment would require all non-owner occupied structures to be inspected for a rental certificate. And these programs, we have a, a list of ones that have signed up for the nuclear family exemption. And we feel like we can start pulling in these structures into the program upon passage of the ordinance. So we are instituting a training requirement. And part of this was the Bridging the Gap initiative. But we feel like we can also expand it and have it benefit our program. So we would ask as part of our rental code for a license holder to complete the training requirement for all owners and managers of properties. It would include the fair housing component and then training on our rental certificate process, what we deem workman-like, how the Housing Appeals Board works, and then have some information available about the multifamily crime-free housing offer from the police department. A sort of change that we've, we've run into also is that the City of Des Moines is getting a new database to replace our antiquated tide mark system. It's called Intergov. Under the Intergov programming, we, we need to change our business model from issuing certificates to a license program. So each property owner--
Sue Ann?
Yes?
Do, do you want to take questions as you go along or you want to wait?
I'd be happy to take questions.
Okay, Josh, I see your hand up.
So the, this goes back, I guess, to, to the, the three, the three items. I was curious, do we know, you said for the, the nuclear family exception, we, we know how many there, there would be impacted. Do we have a sense on the knockout panels and the heat source question? How many units or rental certificates that, that would impact?
I, I don't think we know that, no. Since, since they were allowed to have those in their rental certificates through the inspection program, they were not noted as a deficiency. So I don't believe that we can go back and capture that.
Okay, so we've, we've never really collected data on it because it was, it was already in compliance, so it wasn't something that we were looking for.
Correct.
Do, do we know for, for these things? Was, was there a specific policy choice at some point in time? Like, how, how long do these things go back?
I think the policy choice on the knockout panels go, probably goes back to the, even the sixties when we started running into a lot of the, and it could have been fifties, I don't know for sure. But when people were starting to take big, older houses and make them into numbers of units, one of the things that the owners came up with was, and I'm sure the city acknowledged it, was the knockout panel was a way to exit. It, it is not supported by fire or building code. So it must have been something that came up through, sort of through the rental code. I, I don't have any history on how it was decided to allow them or at what time they were allowed.
And the purpose there is to have multiple egress, multiple ways out. And that was, it's not the primary way out, but it's the, the secondary. Is that, is that the idea behind it?
Yes, that was the idea behind it, was to allow the, a second, a, a second route. But the second route went through another unit.
Yeah, so they're going to have to figure out an alternative second route.
Correct. We, we have, in the last five or six years, when people have inadvertently or by design replaced a door that didn't have a knockout panel or rearranged the configuration and took out that passageway, we have made them go in and come up with the, the best alternative exiting system. So we've caught them on inspections where they've taken out that, that exiting system. And so we've made them do it the right way. And it has resulted in a couple buildings, the floor plans being rearranged. And I know one case, they lost a unit because they couldn't figure out how to do the exiting system. Are there any follow-up questions on that?
But I think that, that covers mine. There are a couple of--
Joe?
Mayor, thanks. Sue Ann, you talked about heat sources. And do we know how many units or how many properties that are going to have to change out their primary heat source to individual heat sources for each unit?
Again, since we allowed the shared heat source, it would pass without note. So we do not have that information. We have, just like knockout panels in the past, if a boiler system goes down and they can't repair it or they need permits to repair it, we have mandated they do separate heating sources. We had a, an appeal of the requirement to separate the heating sources go to the Fire and Building Appeals Board. And the board did not allow that person to retain the one unit, but, but said by code, you have to put in the four units. And then we sort of got a communication from that board that we really should be starting to get rid of those because it is a health and safety issue through the shared exchange of air. And in light of COVID, it, it seems to be something that we should, should be moving forward to get heat sources separated. But, but no, the, the answer is no. We, we don't really have that information.
All right. Thank you.
Bill, I see your hand up.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Sue Ann, I know that all of our landlords are completely above board and fantastic to deal with, but I know there's some bad apples out there. Do, and I can remember back when I first got married, if I would have gone into a rental place, I have no idea what is permissible and what's not. So if I went in, in today's environment and the place I'm renting has a knockout panel, how, how are we going to somehow police that so that some people don't get trapped into that kind of environment because it's been overlooked?
When the, if, if the council passes the ordinance that eliminates knockout panels, we'll set up a, a staged-in approach where when we find the knockout panel, they'll have till their next rental cycle to eliminate that and come up with a different exiting system. So it will be phased in over, over the, the coming years to get rid of those. We will catch them on inspection. If a tenant moves in and it hasn't been phased out yet, they, they will be living in that situation until we can get that next inspection so we can phase it out. Thanks, Sue Ann. Did that answer the question?
Yes, I'd hope there'd be something a little bit more vigorous that would go right after it. I hate this phase-in stuff. All we need is just one person to suffer burns or worse yet, die because a knockout panel was not in an appropriate area. So if we can accelerate that in any way, that, that would appeal to me.
Okay, thank you.
Sue Ann, it looks like Connie has her name up and then Josh, I think, has a follow-up after that.
Okay.
Just following up on when you said you're going to phase it in, I think you said because of COVID, we're way behind. How do we get ahead? Is there, I, I know your inspectors are probably swamped, but is there outsourcing that can be done to help us get caught up? So that we don't get, how long far behind did you think, say, we were?
Well, I think it's going to take us probably a year to get caught back up. But my inspection staff has not, has not slowed down except for the fact that it takes longer to do a virtual inspection. And there are some, some units that haven't gotten into because the occupant or the landlord has COVID or is, is not allowing access because of fear of COVID. So they, the inspection staff has indicated that they want to get back in and do in-person inspections. And we're going to go ahead and approve that with appropriate PPE. And I don't know if we need to look at outsourcing. I can get some numbers and see exactly how far back they think we are and how long they think it's going to take to catch up.
That would be my concern is that, I know we want to make some changes, but even just keeping up with the day-to-day, and I know you guys are probably swamped. So it's not, it's just, what do we need to help get us caught up? So going forward, we can make sure we provide the safety net that we need for rental inspection.
I'll certainly try and put together some, some numbers for you.
Thank you.
Let's go, Josh?
Yeah, the, the heat source question, it just got, got me thinking, you know, long-term, I think one of the things we're going to end up looking at to, to be able to meet climate goals and emission goals is heat source in, in our housing stock. And that's one of the tougher things to, to get a handle on. And that's one of the tougher things to to get a handle on. But if we're in a situation where a landlord or a property owner is needing to make changes to their heating source to comply with code, is that an opportunity where we could encourage electric heat, for example? And that that might ultimately end up being the most cost effective solution anyway. So we might not even have to encourage too much on on that. But is is that something that we could maybe look at a bit and maybe bring in Jeremy Karen to to think about what we can do just from a encouragement perspective, not necessarily changing the code, but providing some resources and education at the same time that something like this is happening?
I think that's a great idea. I would be more than willing to include an educational piece in our process. So yeah, I think it's a great idea.
Thanks. That that's all I've got.
When I see Carl's hand up before he starts, I've got a follow up question to Josh's. You know, it used to be that Mid American would do kind of those analysis upon request of homeowners to look at how to make their systems more efficient. I wonder if we couldn't think about bringing them in as a partner to to help educate and give ideas to our citizens on how they can update and and make their systems more efficient and and hopefully, at the end of the day, save money on the on their bills and and move us towards a reduction in in energy use.
I think that's a good idea, too. And I'll certainly follow up on that and see if there isn't some way to connect mid AM with with landlords. And it it would be interesting to see how we can incentivize that also. So I'll look into that.
Thank you. Carl?
Thank you, Mayor Connie. Sue Ann, what would be your best guess at the number of rental units that are are being rented within a family, whether that's to a son or daughter or other relative? And these units have not been inspected?
I'm guessing around 100.
Okay, great. Are are those sometimes a loosely defined contract sale and and not rental or?
I think what we find a lot of times is parents will buy a house and then let their children live in it. And it isn't a contract. Now, some of these may turn into contract sales if they're forced to go through an inspection. We'll have to see what happens.
All right. Thank you very much, Sue Ann.
All right. Thanks, Sue Ann. You want to move on?
Sure. As I was saying, due to the computer database, we're going to have to move from a certificate to a license program. So each property owner will operate under a business record. And then they will have a rental license for each property or building underneath their business record. So each of the licensed rental licenses will run with the house or the apartment until it is suspended or revoked due to a sale of the building to a new owner. The license will run, I guess theoretically forever. And if it fails a reinspection, it will be suspended until it passes the inspection. So the time for reinspection or review of the license will be based again still on the number of violations that we find. I think that it sounds a little bit overwhelming as a change, but I think once we work it through, it won't be much of a change for either the inspection staff or the landlord. It's just a different terminology and a different processing. But the the computer program does give us some efficiencies that I think are worth it. They will, the landlord will be able to have an account online where they can go in, pay their fees and get ready for their reinspection of their license through an online system. So I think that will help with efficiencies. So you will see, we will see the certificate expiring the license program in an ordinance change so that we can coincide with the Intergov rollout. The next thing that we would like to look at is our fee schedule. Probably in the 90s, we adopted a fee schedule. We were challenged by the Landlord Association. We eventually hired a company to do a fee study. We amended the fee schedule. As a result, we did some refunds for fees collected that were deemed to be excessive. So we really haven't done any updates in our fee schedule. We did one in 07, that was about 3% across the board of all the fees. But it it it's important to note that the fees don't come close to covering the cost of our inspection program. So what we'd like to ask for is, I'm just throwing out 5% across the board fee increase when we bring the rental code up for amendment. And then we would like to be able to hire a consultant to do a fee study and then increase the fees as close as possible to covering the cost of service. And we would know more of what that would be when we get the fee study back. So next steps, getting ready to hold public meetings with stakeholders to discuss these proposed amendments with council's approval. And I see Josh has his hand up.
Yeah, I I was just gonna ask about the fees before we so what what I don't know what the 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 fee amount is right now. And do you have? I well, do you have a sense of what that covers compared to the budget? So what what is the what is the gap that has emerged over the last 20 some years?
I think when I when I did a review of what I thought the fee should be about five or six years ago, I think we were looking at upwards of a 20% across the board to match cost of living. But I don't have a sense now, six years later, what it would be. I I think you're going to run into pushback from the landlord association because the if we wanted to cover 100% of what an inspection costs, there will be a substantial jump in those fees. So I I hesitate to say exactly how much it would be. But I I think we're woefully behind in in the cost of our program.
What what are the fees today?
Well, it it it's like $103 for a reinspection. It's 87.50 for a first inspection on a single family dwelling. Part of our fee schedule problem also is that when they devised this in the in the 90s, it's very, very complicated and breaks it down into all sorts of different levels of fees. And I'm not even sure that we're billing them out correctly because it's so complicated. What I'd like to do is get the initial fee plus the admin paid upfront through Intergov and then standardize the reinspection so that we're closer in line and able to bill out easier.
So part of this process would be to simplify our fee structure?
Yes.
Thanks.
Sue Ann, just to follow up to Josh's question, wouldn't wouldn't we conduct a fee study before we increase the fees?
We we can do it either. It's up to council. I was just trying to get sort of an initial fee increase on the books. But if council wishes to not do the 5% at this point and just do the fee study and then do it all at once later, that's that's a great idea, too. So.
What?
Go ahead, Josh.
If I if I could follow up, I mean, we're anticipating a at least from what I hear, the you don't think the 5% is going to come anywhere near covering this, right? So
Right.
If we're if we were going to look at phasing in anything after after a fee study, getting started now seems to make sense to me. A just because it's gonna we're we're so far apart and we've delayed doing this for so long. It seems like we've got a long way to go to and we would wouldn't want to impose all of this at once.
Again, that's totally up to council if you want to take a little bite of it now and then look at the overall increase, maybe in a more staged approach over time. That would give us that time to look at that and and figure out what you want to do with the increases.
It looks like Bill and Connie have their hands up. Bill?
Thank you, Mayor. Sue Ann, you know, th- these people are running these rentals as a business. I think it's deplorable that the taxpayers of the city of Des Moines have to make up the difference of what the inspections cost so that these guys can run their business. I know when this comes up, I'm going to make sure that we get 100% of the fees that we incur charged to these people. I I can't see any reason that we need to help these people out. It's a business. It it just absolutely drives me crazy that we're subsidizing it with taxpayer money. So I'm I'm all in favor of charging the full amount on day one. That's my my approach to that. Second thing I've got is, have we done any analysis of fees that are charged around the metro or even central Iowa or even statewide? I don't have to go to Chicago to find some kind of fee structure. But have we gone? Have we checked out around our their neighbors?
That's a very good question. And actually, Scott and I discussed that when we met to to go over this presentation. And that is something that I'm going to work out. And I and I think that will be interesting to come back to you when we discuss the whole fee structure later. So we kind of know what our fee study shows and what the other communities are charging.
That would be great, Sue Ann. I'd like kind of getting a feel for it. I like I say, I just don't think we should be in the business of subsidizing these fees for these landlords. Thank you.
Connie?
Following up on the fee structure, how long does a study or if we get consultants into do a study? How long do you anticipate that taking?
Well, we'll have to do an RFP, send it out, then choose the company to do the fee studies. So you're probably looking three to six months before we would get that wrapped up.
So I guess I would weigh in whether to do 5% now and then to know you might be changing it. But if it's going to be a year, I'd go ahead and do the 5% if it was going to be a few months. But based on how long it would take to get the study back, what we would want to because it sounds like it's going to be a significant increase. So just my feedback on that question.
And I can maybe follow up more. I'll talk to Purchasing and see what their timeline would be and what they think it would take.
It would be easier to do it all at once, I would think. But if it's going to take a year to get this thing revisited and reanalyzed, then I would say probably go ahead and do the 5%.
Carl?
Well, thank you, Mayor Connie. So I'm reminded of a conversation I had with Chris Coleman that he said that he might go into the consulting business. Do you really need to hire a consultant to do a stare and compare of what other cities are charging? I mean, I guess so, if that if that gives you the confidence. But I mean, I think four people could get around a table and say, well, this is what they're charging here. And, you know, here are our costs and let's go for it. Unless we have extra consultant money to throw away. You know, maybe we can do this ourselves. Just my thoughts and the the thoughts of Chris Coleman.
Joe?
Yeah, Mayor, Councilman Boss kind of beat me to the punch. You know, we we know our we know our cost. And, you know, my point was asking about the 5% wasn't, you know, are we going to do it all? I think we should do it all at once, but I agree with Connie that we shouldn't wait. But to go hire a consultant, Sue Ann, you've been doing this long enough. You and your staff know the cost, know what it takes. We can get some data from around central Iowa and and other major cities in Iowa. And I think we can probably come up with a cost and just do it all at one time. That would be what I'd like to see instead of doing 5% and then waiting, you know, six, eight, you know, 12 months and raising it again. Let's let's let them know what their upfront cost is going to be so they can. I mean, obviously, they're going to work it into their rent schedule as it as it goes, whatever we're going to do. But we need to, I I I agree, I don't think we need a consultant to tell us how much we're spending for our inspectors and what our costs are.
I I think that we can certainly do that in house. And I don't have any problem tackling that with with finance. And I think that what we learned from the last go around was we are going to need to have pretty solid proof of how we came up with those costs so that we can defend it in court should someone decide to challenge the fees as being over and above what the city can charge. We can't charge to make money and make any profit on the program, but we can certainly charge the cost of conducting the program. So if you want us to start to look at that, we can certainly do that and work with finance and the manager's office on how how best to manage that rollout.
I mean, as as a follow up, so the consulting study is essentially to make our whatever our fee structure ends up being more defensible in court and perhaps less likely to go to court in the first place. Is that is that my understanding of of the purpose of this? And then if that's the case, I mean, I'd be curious as to whether or not legal has a recommendation for how we should approach this? And if that was already taken into account in your recommendation?
What was taken into account for my recommendation was what happened in the past. When we did this internally, came up with what we believe the fees were. The landlord association felt that some of the fees were exorbitant, filed a suit, and then we had to hire a consultant. So just and and legal may wish to weigh in also. But my idea was to be sort of proactive on the defense rather than react. But I also believe that if we if we use good data and we use good a good matrix for coming up with the fees, that we we should be able to defend them. But again, that's hypoth, you know, anybody can file a suit. So.
Joe or or Josh, I see your hands are still up. Did you have any other follow ups?
No, I'm fine, Your Honor.
I I had a question. I I had a question that and it more curiosity, it might be beyond the scope of this presentation. But one of the things that we see at every council meeting is the list of of nuisance abatement. And a number of those nuisance abatement are at rental properties. One, I'm curious about our data collection on that in in terms of do do we when there's nuisance abatement at a property that has a rental certificate, does that get noted somewhere so that in the future we were mindful of that when we go inspect? But also, what does that do from a licensure perspective? And is that something that we maybe want to address as we're looking at the code? If there's been a a series of nuisance abatements at a property, you might be meeting code now, but does that mean you can no longer get an extended license or I guess I'm curious if there are any recommendations related to that when we know we've had issues on an ongoing basis with a property?
Well, in our in our reinspection length of time, we build in that if a property has nuisance abatement within the last year, it gets a shorter certificate. So there are several factors that could weigh in on the length of the certificate. It's violations, number of violations, previous complaints, nuisance abatement and owing taxes to the city. So there it's a it's a fairly complicated matrix to figure out the length of the certificate. But we do take into consideration how they're managing junk and debris, for instance. Is that is that the nuisance abatement that you were referring to as junk and debris?
I I mean, I think that's that's most of it. I mean, there's more than just that that that's on that list, right? I mean, it's one council item and there frequently 30 or 40 properties. So there's a range of nuisance abatement on there, I think.
Yes, and that list is for us to be allowed to assess the property for the cleanup. So you don't see all of the nuisance abatement just because some people will pay the fees. But in the background, we are using that as part of our determination on the length of certificate.
All right. Sue Ann, thank you. Anything else?
No, we will probably come back to you. I was thinking after we do our public meetings and just give you one last look at what the residents and the public are saying about the proposed amendments. And then the next step will be to bring forward the code amendments to you.
All right, Sue Ann, thank you very much. Turn back to Malcolm and Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. There's nothing else that we have today, but do appreciate your your time this morning. Scott, unless you have something?
That covers it, Mayor.
All right, everybody. And any final thoughts or comments from council? Not seeing anybody. Appreciate everybody's input and suggestions and thanks to Sue Ann and Manisha for their pieces. I see our city attorney, Jeff. Did you want to make any comments?
Just real briefly, Mayor, thank you. I just wanted to remind council that the closed session this afternoon will be a little bit earlier than normal at 3 o'clock. We have a lot of items to get through with.
Okay. All right. And unless anybody has anything else, 3 o'clock, we'll have closed session and then we'll move on from there. So thank you all for attending and to our citizens that listened in. Hopefully, this was insightful. Until this afternoon and this evening's city council meeting, we'll bid everyone adieu and this meeting is adjourned.